We are at 7:00. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, then we'll get going. It is 7:00 PM, July 12, 2018. We'll go ahead and call to order the council meeting for Albernett. We will determine our quorum here if we could. Clerk, is there any changes right now to the agenda as it's submitted?
Yes, typo on my part. All of items 5 through 9 should read "second reading." I only got item 5 changed. The rest say "first," it should say "second."
Okay, so 5 through 9, I'll make a note of that.
Actually, 6 through 9 need to be changed. 5 is correct, 6 through 9 need to be changed.
Okay, so we are, we will make any changes at the time of our call to order. I would make a note that Councilman Menson is not present tonight. He has to be away because of a family emergency. All right, I want to thank everybody for coming. I assume everybody got signed in. We would ask that you silence any devices you have for us so we're not disrupted to the council or to the other folks that are in the audience for this evening. Here in the city of Albernett, we do say the Pledge of Allegiance prior to starting any of our council meetings. So at this time, I would ask that you stand. I'll go ahead and make this in the Pledge of Allegiance. Then we'll move forward with the regular business for the council meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you so much. All right, Clerk, would you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilman Saracen, present. Councilman Shantz?
Present.
Councilman Trump?
Present.
Councilman Hendrickson?
Present.
Councilman Menson?
Absent.
All right, let the record reflect that we have one councilman absent, but we still have a quorum for conducting business this evening. All right, the notes of the amendment on the agenda were noted earlier, so items 6 through 9 will be amended to read the second reading instead of the first reading for those items. Can I get an approval for the agenda with those items amended? Moved by Trump?
Second.
Second by Hendrickson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move forward to item number 5. This is a motion to approve the second reading of Chapter 28, adopting the International Business Code 2018 edition and International Residential Code 2018 edition and providing penalties. The council does have the option of waiving the, suspending the rules and waiving the second reading. There is verbiage on the backside of your, of your agenda if you're unfamiliar with that process. This is at the desire of the council. If you wish to do so, you can make that part of your motion, or we can move forward with the second reading and then move forward again with it at a later time. That's the, again, the desire of the council. Having said that, do we have a motion to either move forward with it as it is or to suspend the rules and waive that second reading or the subsequent reading?
I move that we suspend the rule and pass Chapter 28, 42A, 43A, 30, and 42B on the third reading by title.
We have a motion by Shantz to suspend the rules and go ahead and waive that. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Saracen. What, since this is changing the ordinance, can we get this by roll call as well?
Clerk, yes. Councilman Saracen.
Aye.
Councilman Shantz?
Aye.
Councilman Trump?
Aye.
Councilman Hendrickson?
Aye.
And that will also show that there are none against, so the motion carries, would you? Got it as well. All right, then we'll move on to item number 6. Motion to approve the first reading of Chapter 42A, adopting the International Mechanical Code 2018 edition and providing penalties. This is the same option that you would have for suspending the additional reading and passing the motion. Now, do we have a motion to approve that as well with the suspending of the rules?
I would move that we suspend the rules for the third reading of this and adopt the International Mechanical Code.
A motion by Trump?
Second.
Second by Hendrickson. Any discussion? I would also like this by roll call since we're editing code, please.
Councilman Saracen?
Aye.
Councilman Shantz?
Aye.
Councilman Trump?
Aye.
Councilman Hendrickson?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, there were no nays in that the motion carries. Item number 7, a motion to approve the first reading of Chapter 43A, adopting International Plumbing Code 2018 edition and providing penalties. The same situation, do we have a motion to suspend and approve?
I move to suspend and approve.
A motion by Councilman Saracen. Second by Councilman Trump. Again, any discussion? Again, would we get this by roll call, please, Clerk?
Counselor Saracen?
Aye.
Counselor Shantz?
Aye.
Councilman Trump?
Aye.
Councilman Hendrickson?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, we have all ayes and noes, the motion carries. And item number 8, motion to approve the first reading of Chapter 30, adopting the International Property Maintenance Code 2018 edition and providing penalties. Again, entertain a motion to suspend the rules and approve without an additional reading. I'll make a motion to suspend and approve. The motion by Hendrickson?
Second.
Second by Trump. Any further discussion? Again, would like this by roll.
Councilor Saracen?
Aye.
Counselor Shantz?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, there were no nays in the motion carries. And the last one, a motion to approve the first, or, I'm sorry, the second reading of the Chapter 42B, adoption of the ICC Electrical Code 2006 with amendments and the National Electrical Code 2017 addition with amendments and provided penalties. Again, would seek a motion to suspend and approve without additional reading.
I move to suspend the rules for the third reading and adopt the ICC Electrical Code.
A motion by Trump?
Second.
Second by Shantz. Any further discussion? Again, by roll, please.
Counselor Saracen?
Aye.
Counselor Shantz?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that there are all ayes, no negatives, or none nay in that the motion carries. Thank you, I appreciate getting through that so quickly. Let's move on to item 10, which is the sheriff's report. Sheriff's not present, but the report has been printed in your packet. Is there?
No, they don't have that.
Oh, I'm sorry. The report is here. I'm going to go ahead and place it there for your review, they can take a look at that. We'll make it available to the public if they want to see it. This is not unusual for those attending, that the sheriff's department may not be present at the time that we do the report. Many things can happen that could delay them from coming here. If, in fact, they do show up, we'll stop the agenda where it is and allow the sheriff's department to give the report. So, again, if they show up, we'll do that. If not, then we'll make the report available to anybody that wants it. Let's move on to item number 11, which is the mayor's report.
Mayor, can I interject for a second?
Sure.
I think we need, we're going to have to have a second motion on all of those building codes. If you read the language on the, we moved to suspend the rules and to move on to the third reading, but then we need a motion to pass this, the Chapter 28, by title only. It's going to be a two-motion process to get through.
You can't suspend and pass at the same time.
Well, yes, we're suspending a reading, one of the three readings that are required, and now we need a motion to pass it because that basically means we've gone through all three readings and so now it's time to adopt the code, basically.
My apologies, then, then we'll do those. We won't go through them by roll since we suspended those. So then, on item number 5 there, we have a motion to go ahead and approve that after the suspension.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Hendrickson, a second.
Second.
Second by Trump. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Number 6, the motion for the, to approve the Chapter 42 and it's the, and the 2018 edition. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
By Shantz, and do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Number 7, the motion for the first reading of 43 and the plumbing code. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll move.
Moved by Trump, second.
Second.
By Saracen. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That also carries. Number 8, the motion for the first reading, or, sorry, the approval of Chapter 30 and the adoption of the Maintenance Code. Moved by Hendrickson.
Second.
Second by Trump. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. And number 9, the first reading of 42B, the Electrical Code 2016 edition and 2017 edition. Moved by Saracen.
Second.
Seconded by Shantz. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, no. And that motion carries. How's that?
Thank you.
All right, very good. Sorry about that. Okay, for the mayor's report this evening, I just have something that I wanted to give to the council people to consider. We do have, I wanted you to just look at it, I don't want any action on it this evening, but we do do certain things for the public once in a while to give them appreciation. This is a design of a coin, not really a coin, but a design of a key. I put one on the side so you can look what it looks like. This is a different city that did this, and it's basically a key that we would give out as a key to the city for VIPs, dignitaries, that sort of thing, or to thank certain folks for what they've done for us. So, anyway, take a look at it, see what you think, see if it's something that you want to consider doing in the future, and we can kind of go from there. So, I did also want to remind everybody of benefit days that is coming up, and I wanted to thank Guy for the work that you've done on the streets lately. I know we get some of that patching done, so those are my comments for this evening. I will turn it over to the council folks for their comments.
City website update, we're not as far along as I hoped, but I'm still, we'll get her done. So, we did think that it was a July 1 deadline. It turns out the domain renewal was July 20. We're cutting it close, but we're going to work hard next week, Mike and I, to get that where it needs to be.
Okay, so, are you thinking you can go like 20?
It's looking like we're going to push that.
Okay, very good.
I'm just glad to see that our clerk is here, our new clerk is here, present tonight.
Where is our new clerk?
Right behind you.
Hi, I'm Nancy. What's your name?
Danielle.
Danielle.
Yes, I thought we had a placeholder for that. Oh, I guess we don't, do we?
No, I didn't. I wasn't sure when I built the agenda, positive that she was going to be here, so I didn't.
Yes, we do have our new clerk, who starts next week. I'm sorry, I would have brought that up, but I thought we had a placeholder. Go ahead.
I wholeheartedly agree with Jessica.
Yes, thank you for attending. We look forward to you starting next week, so. Very good. No other comments, then we'll move on to the citizen comment portion of the, of the agenda. We have two different comment sections for this. We have agenda items and non-agenda items. If you wish to speak during either one of these sections, the first one is for agenda items, there is a five-minute limit. If you wish to say anything about an item that's on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do so. We would just ask that you state your name clearly, your name and address clearly for the record, and then make your comments to the council on any item that you have on the agenda. Again, you have up to five minutes to do so. So this is the time for that. Any citizen have any comments that they would like to make? At this time, agenda items for the council. Okay, very good. Then we'll move on to citizen comments for any non-agenda items. Again, if you have any comments you'd like to make about non-agenda items, this is the time and place to do that. Go ahead and state your name and address, clearly for the record, and state your comments.
Dave Phillips, 11 Howard Street. I just, I just heard that some of the fire equipment went out on the job and it didn't function right. I said, in repair or plans to get it repaired?
It's repaired.
It's repaired?
It's repaired.
Okay.
Any other comments? Any others? That's it? Chief, any other comments on that? Okay, all right, very good. Any other citizens like to make any other comments? All right, that completes that section. We'll move on to item number 15, the written reports. We have our reports that come from our Public Works Director and the Fire Chief. We'll move forward with the Public Works Director's report this time. Any other items you'd like to add or discuss there?
Nope.
All right, that report is available in your packet after you read it. I don't have any questions. Questions from council on the Public Works report, or any questions you'd have for Public Works?
I did have one thing on long work. I saw they did the crack ceiling. It looks like some of it's already peeled out. Not a lot, I mean, I'm just talking a few reaches, but I don't know if they were coming back or if you just want to buzz down and see.
Come take a look. Yep. It could be this heap that came right out here, I don't know, but.
Yeah, it was a couple of days, I mean, I think it was almost the same day they put it down.
Oh, okay.
It'd be worth looking at if we just get it done.
Okay.
And then, as far as the work that Handley Dirtwork did out on the new green space, that's good to go. They were waiting to see till fall.
Yeah, we got to wait to see good grass, and he is going to deal with the filled dirt pile yet, and, but it's still covered within the bill that he submitted. So, he's coming in to do it, no more charges, but he still needs to finish putting that up into a pile. I think he's going to wait now until it's time to go to final grade and then he'll put the filled dirt up into a pile.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, thank you. You have your fire report also. Chief Graham, any comments or any additional items you'd like to add to that report?
I just, Sunday, Monday, we have our training, and if you see smoke coming from by the city shop, might be us depending on the weather.
Okay.
We got a shed up there, we're going to practice burning some pallets. I don't know if you guys seen it up there, but it stuffs on my property, but it's, if it doesn't rain a lot, we'll probably start some fires.
Okay. Anything else? Very good, thank you. All right, item number 16, is the consent agenda, anything to add or delete to that from the consent agenda items?
Yes, we have two bills that came in late. One is from Brett Houss, Houss Construction. We're down to just the doors on the full shed repairs, and so there's 2,000 left to pay after this bill is paid, but he didn't want to take payment for everything until the overhead doors were in. And then, when I was going on vacation, John had to put gas in the lawnmowers, so this one is to reimburse him for that. The reimbursement for John is $18.70 if anybody's recording it, and Brett's check was 95.87, 9,587 and 86 cents.
Okay, is that the only amendments to consent?
Yes.
Any questions, council? All right, with no other changes, and I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I move to approve the consent agenda?
A motion by Saracen.
Second.
Second by Trump. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. So take us to item 17, the new business for this evening. All right, item A is, we're lucky to have with us this evening the Lynn County Emergency Management, the director, their new director for this year, Steve O'Conne. I know Steve O'Conne for many, many years. I met him back in the mid-'90s. We worked together at the police department. He is a very capable EMA director. We're lucky to have him. I was, as a mayor, I sat on that commission as well as, Mayor Pro Tim Saracen also works with the EMA Commission and is our, the alternate to be out there around the commission as well. So, he's going to not only introduce himself, but say a few words. I would like to mention that any questions that we may have for him or that the public may have, he's extremely experienced, not only as the EMA director now, but one of his primary functions for the police department was working on the mitigation team. And so, he was more than experienced prior to taking the EMA job. So, as a city, we're lucky to have him as our EMA director, especially if something like a tornado or disaster or flood or something like that happened in our city. So, again, we're lucky to have him. Steve?
Wow, no pressure.
Yeah, things go wrong now.
I've had an emergency here where you've had to put me under a test, so what I do have for each of the council, do you have one?
Excellent. Thank you. This is a document that's dated 2015, but it's still very accurate and will help local
elected officials kind of figure out what their role is in an emergency. Thanks for the kind words, Mayor, I appreciate it, I appreciate your time. I won't take less than 45 minutes or so. I just wanted to introduce myself. My predecessor had a saying that a bad time to exchange business cards is during an emergency, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. I just wanted to introduce myself so that you guys kind of know who I am and I kind of get an idea of who you are. I intend to come to some council meetings periodically just to kind of get a flair and stay in touch with what's going on in not only this community, but other communities in Lynn County. And I wanted to make sure that you guys know and hear it from me directly, that if there's anything that the Lynn County Emergency Management can do for you or your city in terms of resources, response, recovery, mitigation, or any of those kinds of things the mayor mentioned, I'm, yeah, I'll make myself available or my staff available. So, even dumb questions, there's no such thing as a dumb question. If you have a question about something and I may not know it, please let me know so that I can help find that answer and get that to you just as soon as possible. My bio is, I come from the police department. I was with Cedar Rapids PD for 33 years. Prior to that, I was with the Department of Minnesota. Spent about 22 years in the Iowa National, Iowa and Minnesota National Guard, and I'm currently a member of and a team leader for the Iowa Incident Management Teams. The state has three state teams that go to help communities manage incidents. They won't come and take over for you, they won't run it for you, they'll work with you side by side to mitigate any problems. So, let's say there's a tornado that comes through Albernett, and that would be a horrific event. We're here to help you guys get through that, both in terms of response and recovery. So, the document, again, I gave you, has some specific powers for the mayor and the city council, and kind of gives you some insight what you could do in those times, and so I would encourage you, it's pretty easy read, take a chance to look at that, and if you have any questions, let me know. I mentioned that we would be there for response, but we're also able to help with tabletop exercises or training exercises. So if you have an incident where you want to bring in the fire department and do a large rescue incident or a hazmat incident, hazmat incident or a tornado tabletop, where we can kind of talk about our role in response and that, we offer that as well. So, that's something the city wants to take advantage of, we offer, will offer any of those kinds of things. I did want to give you one new late-breaking piece of information. We are in the process of upgrading our sirens, both of the sirens that are in the EPZ and those that are around the county. The EPZ is the Duane Arnold Energy Center's Emergency Planning Zone. We've upgraded those sirens with some new software. We have a new backend solution that will allow us to quadrant off the sirens. So, the county's essentially broken up into four quadrants. North of County Home Road is the north quadrant, south of County Home Road is the south quadrant, and then everything east of Highway 13 is the east quadrant, or west of Highway 13 is the east quadrant, west quadrant, and everything east of Highway 13 is the east quadrant. The advantage is we're able to set off sirens in quadrants, not set off all the sirens in the whole county. We know that businesses shut down operations when the sirens go off in southwestern Cedar Rapids, when there's a tornado and prairie bird, and you look outside and it's a day like today. We know that businesses lose productivity when that happens. So, this is kind of the end of a five-year project that my predecessor started and we're finishing up. So we've reprogrammed all the sirens that we have control over, and we'll be able to set those off by quadrant. So, really, if the threat is for, you know, Albernett and not anywhere else, we can make sure we set off the sirens in Albernett and keep an eye on the rest of the county. Our default in the middle of the night with our dispatchers at Lynn County, they also have the capability to set off the sirens, is to set them all off. We have rather err on the side of safety rather than the side of, is this really close to that or not? Because we know storms are really unpredictable. So, in cases where there's one storm cell that blows through, we can set off a quadrant and not the rest of them. In cases where it's a widespread thunderstorm or widespread threat, we can set off all the sirens in the county as well. So, that will really give us a good ability to kind of hand-select those a little bit. And we also, just to let you know, we have a backup at Benton County. Benton County sirens, Benton County EOC and Benton County Sheriff can set off our sirens here, so for whatever reason we're unable to do that, we have a redundancy built in in at least three different places. So, that's the late-breaking news. We're hoping to finish the reprogramming of all those sirens by the end of next week, and certainly yours are already done. So, that's the good news. So, again, just wanted to introduce myself and tell you who I am a little bit, and just offer our assistance. Anything, anything you need from us, my agency will be available for you. And I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any that you have.
As we all know, storms move, and so are you set up so to have a storm in the western part, and it moves to, it starts going to the eastern part, you're going to be able to do the sirens as it, as the storm moves along.
Yes, we can. So, we think it's going to be impacting the eastern part of the county first, we can set that off, or the western part of the county first, we can set those off, and then as we see the storm progress, we can activate them as the county, as it progresses. So if it's going southwest or northeast, we can do the same kind of thing.
Thank you.
If we had, say, if we wanted some future training, whether it was for employees or council or whoever, coordinated through DAEC, would you be our contact for that?
Yes, yep, we can do that. And I know DAEC's worked with the school quite closely, and we had a really good exercise a month or so back, and they performed flawlessly. So, it's good to see that partnership. They really did a nice job. They were well-prepared, and that goes to the leadership, it really does.
Does that mean Josh?
I was there.
It does.
Can't say much more than that, I was there.
That's good to hear. Well, and I totally agree with that. If you remember the 2016 floods, not only the city, I wasn't mayor then, but I was on the council, but the council, the city, the schools, Public Works, we filled sandbags for the city and the, and the school and everything, filled sandbags to take to the assist with Cedar Rapids. So, Albernett's always willing to help.
That's awesome, and I think the rest of the communities would come help Albernett if that were the case. I didn't mention, but I had a little experience in 2008 during the flooding there. I was the patrol division commander, so we were trying to manage the flood and response there as well as managing the rest of the patrol functions for the rest of the unaffected areas of Cedar Rapids. And we learned a tremendous amount in 2008 that we were able to put into action in 2016. I think everybody kind of saw the difference in response from 2008 to 2016, and so I'm kind of proud of the team that we put together to be able to manage that a lot better. So, that's where I'm at, that's where I come from, and if there's anything I can do, please let me know.
We sure appreciate it. Other questions for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right then, well then we'll go ahead and move on to item B. Nancy Fuller, for this is your benefit day in the tractor pull and the e-front porch of. In Grove, in the September event.
Yes, okay. Nancy Fuller, thirty-five forty, out of Robbenville, Iowa, five K three pole. I'm not quite sure where to start, so I'm going to. Always looks like you're about to make trouble, you know that. We would like to do something on the front of our building to make it so when you open the front door, all the heat doesn't come rushing in or all the cold air doesn't come rushing in. We don't have a plan for it yet. We need to see what you guys say. And I don't know what all the specifications for the city are as far as how far you can build anything or do anything from the curb, the sidewalk, from the sidewalk to the building. So on this little diagram, you'll see that like the historical society, Mike's over here, how far they are from the curb. And then they got that little cement approach and how far it is and then how far we are from the curb. And if you would, if it's allowable, if we could have four foot to go out to just build a separate or enclosed entryway.
Like the temporary ones or the permanent ones or what do you? You're talking of another set of doors that keep the distance of people to go in?
You tell us what we can do. We will, of course, you know, try and figure something out and get your approval for it before we did anything. But we kind of want to see where we're at in order to do that.
Maybe this will get into easements and things like that and whatever engineering things.
We check with Vince and maybe the engineer about where the actual property line is, et cetera, et cetera. I'll start with Vince, the building inspector. He should be a good resource and tell us where to go from there. So.
Any comments from council on that? All right.
No, I need more information.
Yeah, as I said, I didn't, more, get into engineering and things like that. Do you have an, other than four foot, do you have an idea of what you want to put as far as? Were you talking the stick-built structure?
Depends on what you guys would allow. If we could, if we could do something, stick-built structure, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
You know, we can.
When it's not canvassing, you're talking building a.
Something that looks nice.
Yeah, okay.
You know, and if needed to be removed, we could, you know, pull the bolts or whatever out of the concrete and, you know, if anything ever needed to be done to the sidewalk or what have you. Everyone knows that there used to be a tractor pole, well, there used to be a tractor pole right over here on Albernette Children's Benefit Days every year.
Okay, who drew this?
Chester Cascone drew this. That's not my handwriting. So there is a way to have another tractor pole outside of the Ball Diamond that is right up here. Kyle Beaton Bender will rent the ground on the other side of it to be able to have a tractor pole. So what they're after right now is that they want to know if you guys will be for this or against this. Because if you're against it, they're not going to do anything. But if you're for it and you want to see it happen, then they'll start doing whatever they need to do for the ground and getting everything prepared for next year for a tractor pole on Albernette.
Who sponsor, okay, the Diamond Club sponsoring us in for?
Yes.
This year or next year?
Next year.
Yeah, Diamond Club owns all this property it's proposed on?
What's that?
The Diamond Club owns all of this property, right? It's like it's in their field or is it outfield there?
Yes, and then that is what Kyle Beaton Bender would rent.
That's part of it, right? So it's part of the field.
Right, and they've talked to all the, I would say eighty-five percent of the people that live right there and everybody's for it so far.
Comments from council on that?
I, I've been, this has been passed in front of me. I, I don't think I have a problem as long as, you know, and I said to Chester and Rena, I said, you, you just have to make peace with your neighborhood there to know that that's going to be loud and it's, you know, it's going to be late. And as long as you get the blessing of the, of the neighborhood, that's, you know, because when it was back here, the closest houses were quite a ways away and blocked by residential buildings. You're going to be really close to residential, that's my concern. The other concern is making sure there's enough parking, but at least the land probably takes care of that.
Well, and part of their thing is on Albernette days, they park everywhere. And if they couldn't get enough parking there, they will run go-karts and something, I don't remember what it all. Not go-karts, not go-karts, golf carts.
Shuttles to bring people back to.
What hours would you expect to be running this during the actual competition, plus it got set up and tear down?
Right, actually, how it used to start was right after the parade. And the parade was at eleven, so it started at noon. And if I recall right, it was done before it was dark.
Yeah, because they have lights.
There were a couple of years, they, they would have lights if needed. But there were a couple of years that it went a little past that, but typically speaking, it's done before dark.
And you are aware of all the insurances and all that?
Yes, and they are also. So like I said, they just, they need to know if you guys are okay with them kind of starting and moving forward with it. Because they don't want to invest time or money if you guys are against it.
I'm reviewing the special event permit from last month from the Diamond Club, which hasn't been approved yet, by the way.
I've never seen it. I was thinking about it today, but.
It says, describe the activity. It says carnival games, tractor races, food, street dance, silent auction. It doesn't say the location that it gives.
I have all that, that, I have all that.
Mayor, if you'll excuse me, she's talking about next year, not this year.
All right.
It's not going to be on there.
So they're not thinking about, okay, all right, that was a little confusing.
No tractor pole this year, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no tractor pole this year. They have a lot to prepare.
Okay.
That's, yeah, I didn't know where to start, I have so many things to talk about.
You said you had to talk with most of the people in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay, I misunderstood, but reading that item, it makes it sound like you're trying to get ahead of it for some of the stuff yet this year, so, okay. All right, so, all right, go ahead then.
Preparation for the tractor pole for next year.
Okay.
If you guys are for it, then they'll continue with all their planning and prepping and getting stuff ready and leasing the land. But if you guys are against it, they aren't going to invest time and money in it.
Okay. Well, the only reason I ask is because when they came last month, they were talking about doing stuff out there. And then when that didn't kind of work out, then they talked about this stuff here. And I thought maybe they might be switching gears again, so.
I probably approached this in the wrong way.
Okay, all right, so we have time to figure this out. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I do know it's a missed event. A lot of people miss having the tractor pole and so I think it would be welcomed by the community. I don't see a problem with it. My concern would be traffic flow, just with the tractors and trailers coming and going in that highly residential area. So just maybe have some control in place for that. I don't, I mean, they've got the circle driveway back there, so just.
I am going to interrupt you for a minute too. You don't mind?
I don't mind.
Come on in. No, go ahead, you've got the floor. We're gonna stop what we're doing here. We'll go ahead and recognize Lynn County for our monthly report. We don't like that. Hold Joe. Thank you, sir. You're famous.
You are.
Deputy Tyndall in County Sheriff's Office. For city, required hours of forty-three for June seventy-three point three four. Names down, directions down the bottom, just a few questions, call Rachel Coulson, he is in the office.
Okay, yeah, we've, we had a previous copy too. We've had an opportunity to review this. Any questions for the, for Deputy Tyndall for, or any concerns with the city to address with Lynn County Sheriff? No, any concerns with the city or anything that we need to be doing?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, very good. We appreciate you coming by and giving the report, thank you.
Appreciate it. I was going to say, the fire department helped me out on that, the tractor department.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right. Thank you, yeah, continue please.
I'm, I'm just kind of at, if you guys are hot.
How big an area are you talking about for this parking, you know?
They're gonna rent four to five acres.
That's what I had heard too, was four to five acres. Mostly for the rigs, right? For the pit area.
Yes, that's more.
The pit, not parking.
That's what it is, they're gonna run a shovel from like the school to there to get people back and forth.
Looks like a good idea, because you know, the only time we ever get traffic on Nellard Drive is when people get lost or something. Trying to get out of town.
Okay, so it sounds like based upon the comments of the council, there isn't great opposition against it. It's, depends upon the folks that are living in that area to make sure that you've got the consent of those and then bring it back to us at that time as a special event. If, because of the hours mainly, it sounds like, or the noise maybe. So, does that sound acceptable?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, very good.
Albernette Days, where I guess I should have started.
This year's?
This year's Albernette Days. The paper on top is what the Diamond Club has planned as far as where everything is. I know you guys kind of wanted to know about all that. And I, I don't know exactly what Rena had last month with.
The application?
Yes, I don't know if she had insurance with that, copies of it or anything. But I do know they have it and I can get that to you if it wasn't attached.
There were a couple of issues with it, which I made available, or I said that I would identify those and get back to them with that, which I did timely, made the council and clerk aware of it. It wasn't anything major, it wasn't signed, it didn't have a certificate of insurance and they didn't verify where they were placing their toilets, things like that. Overall though, it didn't have the window that was needed. We might have to do a special meeting or something like that unless council wanted to waive that for the approval. But anyway, it looks like maybe you corrected some of that. I see that at least this particular application has a signature.
The next application actually is for Fullers.
Yeah.
Just because I like to do things properly.
Yeah.
And so we're covered.
Yeah.
So the street is actually going to be closed where it normally is every year down by Dave's up to the fire station with the, or past the fire station the road is. But the fire station can still get in and out, there will always be access there. We're going to have a band out of the street. We'd, we'd like the permission to close the street. We will have our beer tubs up front like we have done before. We, actually, oh, on the back, two pages of that is we got two security, two security person, people to donate their time. This company has allowed them to come in, be here from seven-thirty to eleven-thirty in exchange for being able to put their banner up. And yes, there's going to be porta-potties. Am I missing anything?
You had this prior to, whereas the first year, it was first. I mean, it looks proper on its face here, but I haven't had a chance to review it yet.
I, with the security people, I just got that today, like an hour before we came here. So in essence, what we're asking for is permission to shut the street off, permission to have the band, permission to put our beer tubs out.
Can I take it you're wanting approval of this this evening?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Albernette Days is.
I don't see a huge issue with it, other than you're going to have to convince the council to approve it, but under the thirty-day window, so, which is not impossible.
Well, Albernette Days was, I mean, Albernette Children's Community Benefit Days application was there. It's why we didn't do anything yet. I just wanted to have our part there. And, and, okay, I'll convince you guys. How was it, oh, and I'm gonna try and. On our grand opening, did anybody drive through town the next day? Did I, did you see anything laying out on the ground, see beer cans?
Yeah, you picking up the stuff.
Al even came and helped me sweep the streets.
Yes.
You know, we did, we did pretty good the night before, but we come the next day and we swept everything and, you know, made it look normal and thank goodness for the rain, so the kids sidewalk chop wiped off the road.
We came down and took a few pictures of it and even some video. The, the band was no, who does Sweet on Alabama? What group is that?
Ramblin'.
Yeah, they're no Lynyrd Skynyrd, but they were, they were pretty good.
They're our hometown.
I took a few pictures in case we wanted to put it on the website. It was a nice event, yeah, very good. All right, well, the council, I think probably looked this over, is there a desire to go ahead and approve this with the understanding that they're not quite at the thirty-day mark?
I would make a motion, we approve a special event permit for Fullers that coincides with Benefit Days.
Second, or I'm sorry, the motion is by Saris and the second by Trump. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries, you've got your special event for this one, you say you have another one?
Thank you. This will be like I gave you for our grand opening. It is what may happen, it may not happen. I just want to let you know what we have going on and what we would like, if it does happen, just so I am within my thirty days. I'm, one of them, I'm within over sixty, but so. Okay, the first one we'll do is the, it's the benefit, it's a golf outing for the fire department to raise money to help build the new fire department.
The thirty days just gives us enough time to approve it at a council meeting prior to the event. I mean, it's, and to help us prepare, prepare for it for shutdown.
This is actually the, the little poster that, that is around. So you have a black and white copy of it on there. But it's, they're doing a golf outing and a silent auction and prizes and raffles. And I'm not quite sure how much further, how much bigger this is going to be. So that's why I threw it out there for a special event in case we decide, okay, they're gonna have a band, they're gonna have this many people out here and we should close the road because it's right across from the fire department. You know, maybe we can add something to it to raise more money for them instead of just the golf outing and then everybody comes over after the golf outing. So permission to close the street if needed, put a beer tub out if needed, to have an auction out there, to have food out there.
These are the two that go with this.
And they will go with the next one also, that's why I handed them up separately.
Yeah, it looks properly filled out, any issue with this as far as the closure? Chief Graham, I assume you recommend approval on this to support your event. Council, do you have any issues with this?
I don't.
All right, then.
My only question, would we need the barricades from eleven AM to eleven PM?
No, no, I just, I wasn't sure of how it, you'll know more next month.
We're hoping to be down like, like three, hopefully.
If, if that's.
Right, but if we added something else to it to raise more money for you, is why I put that.
If, if that's not until September eighth, we'll have an August meeting. If you wanted to table that one, that would be maybe better because then you will have the details by the August meeting.
Right, right.
And I just need to get it put on the agenda and it'll be that simple. Then you can just come in and tell me.
I didn't know what day it fell on, so I didn't, wasn't sure where I would be.
Yeah, it's just that I will have the August meeting, so.
Wait, is there a risk this is going to change?
That, no.
No, oh, okay.
Okay, so you can go ahead and approve it too. However, I just threw it out. If you want to get things more nailed down, that's.
That's pleasure to the council. Do you want to approve tonight or do you want to table? Do we have a motion by Shans? Second by Trump, any other discussion?
Only discussion would be, I know, I know you're trying to nail it down, but obviously we only barricade for, you hate to disrupt traffic if there's nothing really happening.
I really agree, I, I will not have it barricaded when nothing's going on.
So just work with Guy ahead of time and make sure we know what events are happening.
Definitely.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries, thank you.
Last thing I'm gonna bombard with you guys with, and this will go with the first two pieces of paper I gave you, the insurance and the map. If you've ever heard of BACA, it is called bikers against child abuse, sorry. They would like to do a benefit run, which they do every year a couple of times a year. They'd like to start it in Albernette and end in Albernette.
You're getting good at filling these out.
What kind of participation do you have that you had in the past?
What kind?
Numbers? How many bikes are you gonna be running through town?
On this one, I want to guess maybe fifty. It, it, it's a guess. It's not huge yet because BACA in Cedar Rapids just got created, I want to say three years ago. So it isn't real big yet. So that would be where we would block off the street when they would all come to register. And then when everybody takes off, the street gets unblocked. And then depending on what they decide to do for the end of the night, there was a band that wanted to donate their time to them. You'll have more details next month from me. And then we would figure out the times for that and then block off the street. And I, I want to say maybe four hours for when they come back.
Weekends in a row.
I was gonna say.
I know, I thought that too. So what do I do, approach this one this month or wait till next month? Do you have a break in between?
I guess I'd be interested in the opinion of not only the fire chief, but the public works director as well as the council on this. It is two weekends in a row, we're blocking not only the city streets for the citizen use, but also a public safety response. Public Works?
No, I don't, it's, it's not a big deal to bring signs down instead of up. You know, I might even go on that bike run, so I'll just have to drop signs off before we leave, so.
Counsel?
It's a good cause and we have a decent playground. I mean, the way our streets are laid out, I don't think it's a big inconvenience for anybody. I mean, Benefit Days is larger, they take more of the street, so I don't have a problem with it.
So is there an application for a third weekend in the road?
Not yet.
That one might have a better chance.
Right, we will always keep the streets open as long as we can. Because I agree, I don't, I don't like going through town and going, really, I gotta go around? I agree. Try to keep the public happy.
As long as the public's happy and there's not a safety issue with it. Counsel, we have a decision on this one?
I move we allow the special event permit for September fifteenth.
Moved by Trump. Second by Saris and any other? Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Did I do that in less than twenty-five minutes? I figured five minutes per round.
That's all right. We wanna make sure that we've got all the details out, so we order things good. We appreciate it, and we do appreciate everything you do for the city with your business. All right, item C, discuss the purchase of three SCBA units for the fire department in a possible motion, chief. I think this is something that came up before. Is this the continuation of some other purchases, or is this something new?
Yeah, we bought four last year, one thirty-six, and we went by three, that complete, four thirty-four.
Okay.
And it was budgeted, had budget time to do three more.
Do we need discussion on this, or...
I just have a quick question. What's the lifespan on these?
Fifteen years.
And how many will we need total?
Twelve total.
Okay, so then we're thinking seven, so we've got, kind of, another round.
And we bought tanks, last year from Hiawatha, that has light on them, so we can, they all expired at once, and we didn't realize.
Yeah, that's what I wanna avoid, so I appreciate.
That's where we're going every year, so we know.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Motion approved, chief's here.
Moved.
Moved by Trump, second, I'll take your, Saris in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, thank you. Item D, review the purchase of the land board and the green space in possible motion. Just a couple comments on this, and I'll turn it over to the maintenance clerk, whatever you want to call him this evening. This is continuation of what we've already approved, but the, the green space that's out there that we're purchasing for the new fire department, there were basically two options. We go ahead and sign off for the purchase of the agreement, and then seek the, what would work out to be waivers of the, how we wanna use the land, which the covenants out there, obviously, we're not gonna live by some of that covenant rules because of the nature of the fire department. Or we go ahead and have the attorney process it through their legal work, prep it for signature, and then get those covenant waiver signatures prior to. The attorney's opinion is that we should seek that option, get everything prepped, collect those signatures, and then move forward with closing out the deal. I love the opinion that the attorney is correct, and that's what we should do. Guy has reviewed this in detail, he's of that same opinion, so that's where we're at. But before any document is executed, we wanna make sure that the council's in lockstep with that decision.
So, people are aware of what's going on? How many people have to sign off on that kind of thing to go ahead?
Fifteen out of twenty, fifteen out of the twenty lot owners in, in that addition, so...
And perhaps if that didn't happen at one time, it could be done another time in the future?
No, I think the essence of the, of the attorney's feelings is with these covenants, we need to be released from these covenants now before we buy it, because if we don't and, and we fail to get the signatures afterwards, we might not be able to build a fire station or even put playground equipment on that land, because we would be subject now, those covenants individually, like all covenants do, but it would be years down the road.
Twenty years before they start, yeah.
But that's, we're not that far from that, you know? But, but by the same token, I feel like two of you live in that addition right now, and you feel like your neighbors are gonna...
Half the people have broken the covenants themselves, they're not gonna...
But I think...
I mean, I, what I'm saying is, I don't think there'll be a problem with the fifteen signatures.
And also, if there's potential green space out there, and the kids out there, I think people are gonna...
It won't be me.
Emphasis.
They'll be, they'll be impacted, so.
Yeah, right.
Either way, I think it'd probably be easy to get the covenants.
I think, I think so too, and I believe that. Fifteen out of twenty property owners have to sign. Yeah, yeah, fifteen of the people that own lots in that addition have to sign, fifteen out of the twenty lots.
That'd be a good one, too.
I don't know if they're in that addition or not. Basically, when I talked, spoke with the attorney, you know, if, if you guys are willing, the people that live in that addition, to knock out five apiece, I think Brian's in that addition too, or even if he's not, he's close enough, he knows all the neighbors, just if each of you do, can knock out five, then...
Is it fifteen, the homeowner, the fifteen signatures people that...
No, I think it's fifteen, like fifteen parcel owners, fifteen different property.
It's not like we're building our own houses and, and, you know, tearing up the covenant rules. This is for a fire station, you know? I just need to be able to make a functional public safety response.
I think it's in this first, what is considered this, these phases right here, right? Yeah, first edition.
Yeah, so it's from here to here.
Twenty lots.
Yeah. So mainly yours and Brian's.
It's the closest lots to the property we're talking about.
Oh, is he, is he that far out? Okay.
So it's just down, long...
It's just adjacent properties.
Basically down, onward. Yeah, and there probably is twenty lots going down, onward, yeah. And, and we'll determine that, and the attorney will then help us to create a document to make it signed, and then, you know, once that's collected, he can go ahead and do the paperwork, you know? We agreed to all these costs to be on us, so we don't have to ask Naylor Estates to, to supplement, so we'd have our attorney move forward, bear the cost, get the signatures, and then get a purchase, we've already motioned and approved for the mayor to sign a purchase agreement once it's prepared. So if we have a motion tonight to proceed with this option to get the signatures first, that tells the attorney that we can go ahead and execute as we planned before, once the signatures are secured.
And Rex is aware of this?
Yes.
Yep, our attorney's been in contact with him. Absolutely, and he has no issue with it either. He is perfectly fine with it.
Can we get a motion to go ahead and collect the signatures prior to, prior to executing the contract?
I would both, that we achieve sig, twenty, fifteen out of twenty signatures within Naylor State's first edition with the purchase of the green space.
Motion by Saris, second by Trump. Any other discussion on this? All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, thank you. All right, then we'll move forward to item E, discuss the purchase of billing permit module for data tech software in possible motion. This is, so I understand that Guy can explain it better than me, but this is a module that we're gonna need moving forward for some of our projects, and this is also, I believe, in conjunction with what our mutual aid city is doing as well with their data tech.
Exactly. Robbins has it, they use it extensively, suggested that we have it. We looked into it earlier, decided we wait until we had a clerk on board. Danielle can learn this as she's learning the rest of the data tech. It basically brings all that billing permit information as far as counts receivable, et cetera, et cetera, all into our data tech software. It's a lot easier to track. Right now, we got files here, there, and everywhere, and it's just a manual process of trying to keep track of billing permits. And also, the module would make it a lot easier to determine the fee when someone comes in and tells us what we're doing. It'll be just a matter of inputting the information, and you will have the fee generated for you, so there won't be any, I, I've been struggling, I'll make it perfectly honest, because I hadn't ever done it before, and Liz is doing a great job of trying to, to show me, but I think this will be very helpful. From what I've read in the information, there is a couple information packets in front of you, if you wanna look through it, but, yeah.
Just scanning through this, it looks like it will help with tracking inspections when they're done, and when the permits expire.
Yes.
Just better record keeping with your books.
Exactly, and also, it is a, there's a check to say that the fee has been paid. Right now, we've got a little file folder up on the file cabinet saying permits that have been applied for that haven't been paid yet, and so gotta run up there and take a look at it. Well, all you have to do is pull it up on the software with this module, and you'll see who hasn't paid for their, their permit yet, et cetera, who's getting close to the end for the permit to expire, so we can check in and see if they need to be, you know, fill out a new permit, or if they're almost done, or whatever. Right now, it's, it's a matter of writing it down in memory, so the software will help us track and manage it, for sure. So, and it's, I feel like it's a perfect time to do it, you know? Danielle's gonna be in a learning curve with the entire software package, she can learn that piece right along with the rest of it, so it'll be just like starting from scratch with her.
Is this a cost or a maintenance option, or what, how we...
As far as...
The cost of it?
Yeah, the cost of it. That's, I was looking for guidance from Chester a little bit on that, where do you think that falls into play? I struggle with that. The office portion, same accounts that we pay for our data tech support, et cetera. Yeah. I don't believe we did budget for it.
I don't think so.
Do you see any issue with the funding piece?
But I'm sure we can figure something out.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so council, the needs been explained, we can, looks like Chester, we can absorb it, so any other discussion on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve it.
I move we approve the purchase of the permits module from data tech.
Motion by Saris, second, second Henderson. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, item F, discuss proposed improvements to city hall and possible motion. This is something that has been talked about.
Sorry, never goes off.
This is something we've talked about here for a little while. If you look at your packets, I did include a diagram to give you a general idea. We've discussed a couple different things. There's two items on here, which I'll talk about together, and then we can approve them separately if it's the desire of the council. One of them is the leasing of this particular facility that we're in that we're doing on a yearly basis. The last time that was approved, there was some discussion about extending that lease for a longer period of time. I don't think that there's going to be any movement out of this facility in the near future. That might change. Once a new fire station is constructed, we'll have more options at that time, but at least for the foreseeable future, it appears we're going to be in the city hall that we're in now. So, that being said, we had talked about updating some of the items within the city hall. Some of those costs would be incurred by the city, some of those costs would be incurred by the owner of the facility through our leasing. There was a desire that we would do something with the interior of the building, as well as lighting, which you can see has been improved, and we, we thank the owner for that. As well as the door, we talked about different things, replacing that and ADA requirements and things like that, and the owner has, has taken care of that also. Improvements to the interior of the facility, especially since we may be here for multiple years, which that'll come up here, about a multi-year lease here in a little bit. But some of those improvements we talked about, including was to remove all this temporary wall that was here. This was the prior lease person that had this, served, I believe, I can guess here, but I think it was tanning rooms and different things like that. They do not serve us any purpose for what we're doing in this particular facility. The other thing was in painting of the walls and things like that. You can see that there's different marks and things on the walls and, and different cutouts and stuff that was there because of the previous lease owner, and it's time that we updated the interior and made it look nice and professional, and as a clerk for this, or for the, not the city clerk, but the city hall, for the citizens to appreciate and utilize. So, the particular diagram that I've put there shows that this wall would be removed, that this type of seating would be placed in a permanent structure, kind of where we are here. That would be custom built, it would obviously be a set structure, and it would be built in such a way that it would be modular, but put together to where the city would continue to own it. So if we did exit this facility in three years, five years, whatever it would be, the city would still own that, and we would dismantle it and take it with us. It would also give us the ability to have microphones that would be better recorded, so when we put our public record recordings and things like that on the web, you can hear much better. If you've had to go back and review some of the video, you can tell that it's very hard to hear, not only the citizens that wanna speak and make comments, but it's hard to hear us, and it should be very easy for the citizens, or anyone that wants to review a council meeting, to be able to hear everything that's said for the record. So that kinda gives you an idea of what we're looking to do. The other improvements as far as the painting of the walls, or the, the removal of some of the lighting that doesn't really matter and things like that, that'll all be done organically with resources within the city. In other words, we wouldn't outsource the dismantling of this wall, we would use city resources to do that, our personnel. As far as the painting itself, we've agreed that we would handle that internally. I'll come up and paint, you know, we're not going to outsource that and cost the taxpayers any funding for that. So, the vast majority of the items would be paid for with either the time or volunteerism of the people that would improve the look and feel of city hall. Now, the, the costs themselves, we have general ideas of what it would cost to be able to build the items and the audio video that would have to be put into place to do it. It would be hard to go and bid it as a large project, because most of it is piecemeal, that different items are purchased from different, from different areas, and they serve different purposes. We do know that an overall project cost would not exceed ten thousand dollars, which is what we're hoping to get approved this evening. I say we, because me and Guy generally worked on what the items would look like, what it would cost, and things like that. That pays for equipment, for the outsourcing of the building of the council seating, and the updating, the, the paint, and things like that, to be able to improve the facility. So, you can review it, you can table it, or if you wanna approve the project cost not to exceed ten thousand, then we will begin work immediately on improving city hall. Keep in mind that, again, whether it's a year, three years, or five years from now, when we leave, we'll take ninety percent of the improvements that we do with us. The only thing that would remain, of course, they get the paint on the walls and things like that, but that would be it. The rest of the items that we purchased as installed property, or even the seating itself, will come with us for our new facilities. That's it. Guy, any other?
No, I mean, we, we've sought, you know, evidence, and, and truly believe we can come in below that number, but to be on the same side, that's probably where the numbers should be.
What do you see as the biggest expense here? I mean, you and John will probably knock this thing out.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody's gonna build this table.
Yeah, somebody's gonna build the table. Biggest expense would be building the platform, the table.
You haven't said anything about the platform yet.
Yeah.
That's what I don't see in your drawing, either.
The platform itself occurs because of the time that you remove this wall. The carpeting was put in after this wall was put in. There'll be a slight gap in what's left right here, so that, there's a small platform that would be put in, so you wouldn't see any seams or anything like that that would occur there. So there, there's a small step on the platform that, where it would be based on.
And that would run most of the way to this back wall?
To the back wall. To the back wall, correct. There would be some shelving that would go in on the back wall back there, but that would, that would be it.
Because we have records that still need to be stored, so we have to accommodate those too. The best option was to build a platform to put the council table on with storage on the backside against the back wall, but not climbing the wall, so that it wasn't visible.
And we've already had some discussions about some improvements in here, which we've discussed before about, you can see that the lighting fixtures were brighter and all covered. We talked about that seat served no purpose, in fact, after we worked with Gary, to get that removed because of realigning cabinets, cabinet storage. I think you said it wasn't even functional.
No.
I mean, so it served no purpose, and you can see that that, how that improved not only the interior space of where everybody has seating now. We've been very frugal in everything that we've done. In fact, last month, when we didn't have enough seating in here, and we looked at purchasing new seating, this seating was, we acquired it.
I came across it for free.
At no cost, so, and it's more comfortable. So we're doing everything we can at almost no cost, so I think it's a worthwhile project, and I'd like to see us improve the facility.
Well, it'd be nice to have something thumbed up as far as the lease too, before we put a, put a lot in here too. I moved a table this morning.
Yeah. Any other discussion on that?
The financing is the only thing. I think it's a great idea, well thought out. The financing is the thing to make sure we've got it all lined up.
Okay.
I'm just curious if what you're talking about is like what they're doing at Walker right now, the platforming type thing, 'cause we've seen they're in the middle of... right now, the platforming type thing, because we've seen they're in the middle of building that.
I have, I knew Kevin was doing something, but I haven't seen it yet. I don't know.
It's nice. It is, it's nice.
Okay, so, uh, we got a motion by Trump, second by Sean's, or it was the other way around. I don't remember now.
I'm really trying.
Okay, a motion by Trump, second by Sean's. So, we're going to table this item pending some, uh, harder numbers, which I will make available before next month, on what the, uh, the portions of what the council seating and everything will cost. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, then we'll, uh, revisit this next month for the improvements on city hall. Thank you. All right, the next item is, uh, discuss the lease in possible motion. We are in a lease through, uh, fall of this year, uh, and would like to be able to, um, go into negotiations, uh, with, uh, Gary for a multi-year lease. Um, again, you don't necessarily have to approve anything, but if you're deadly against, uh, deadly against it, I need to know that now, but, um, to pursue a three or five-year lease, even if it auto-renews year to year, but would, I think we get more favorable options by a multi-year lease, so, um, is there any issue with doing a multi-year lease on this facility?
No, we should do that, and if we got some certainty, that will be a good one.
I guess I think I would suggest we go for three years.
Three years.
That'd be my recommendation. Don't ask me for backup data.
Well, and, you know, a lot can change with three years too. Obviously, a fire station could be completed at that time, sure. Okay, um, so, there's no issue with, um, moving forward with a multi-year lease as long as it doesn't exceed a three-year lease?
I do that.
Uh-uh, okay. Um, actually, it probably wouldn't hurt to have a motion on that as well, as you.
Make it so that you have Charlie the ability to, the mayor to have the ability to negotiate this lease would be.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh.
We can, we can enter negotiations.
We're going to enter negotiations for a three-year lease on this building.
All right, there's a.
On this facility.
On this facility. There's a motion by, uh, Sean's, second by Trump. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, thank you. All right, item H, uh, discuss adding a portable stop sign Roosevelt Street and Second Avenue during this. We'll drop off. Guy?
Yeah, Councilor Sarason requested this. You've seen the traffic and the kids, uh, pick up and drop off time, um, and I included the DOT information. It's just a matter of, of letting them know that we want to do this. I've got the materials. I can get a portable put together. Um, it's on hand. I, I don't think I'd have to purchase, maybe wheels is, is all I'd have to get. Um, my only issue at all is who's going to drag it on and off the street. That's.
Yeah, I didn't know if you talked to the school, so this actually came to me from a concerned parent. So this is the, the back parking lot area where they circle in and pick up, and then you have children trying to cross the street, and so this would stop traffic always on that three-way part of the street, just during drop off and pickup in school, on school days.
Has there been discussion with the school at all on this?
No, I haven't, I haven't touched base, no. And, and if you read, if you read that material at all, the school could actually apply for this too, but I feel like we can do this together, so yes, I think the conversation needs to, to move forward. I didn't get a chance to talk to anyone.
I think the big thing is to get somebody that's willing to take it in and take it out, because we had that in the past, and it didn't get taken out. I'll go run into at night, and so that's what it was directed, we take it down.
Okay.
We have a, um, I assign a person to watch. I mean, there's, it's not like it's a safety control or anything like that, but I assign a person to watch that back lot, make sure kids get picked up by the right person and they let that, there would be no issue to have them pull it out, because we're probably talking half hour, right?
Yeah, right.
Three thirty to, or three twenty-five to four o'clock.
My only recommendation is don't, don't appoint a janitor, because they'll be all fixing the leak or something.
No, it isn't. It's a, it's a staff member that, that's their.
That's up to you.
We have a, we have a duty roster, and that's part of their duty, is to be in that back lot, so.
That's what happened last time.
That's not an issue. Well, I can't say it's not an issue. There will be days that it's probably an issue, but for the most part, we'll make sure that's part of the.
But you see the risk. I mean, I think it's, I think it's something worth pursuing. Is it one of those things where we make application and then we can really nail it down with the school?
Yeah, yeah.
Josh obviously supports it.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I could follow through with that.
I would think it would be better if we both together applied, don't you think?
Yeah, I don't know if we can apply together or not. I don't know how the rules, the rule, it says it, in general, traffic control devices are the responsibility of the city, but because if, if it's a school situation, the school can apply, so I think it's going to have to be one or the other of us apply for that, that, um, traffic control device from the DOT, and since we have the materials, I'm absolutely okay with applying, because I've got stop signs, I've got the stuff to make.
You're not concerned that they'll deny it either way?
No, I'm not concerned at all, absolutely.
My only question wasn't mentioned, you know, school zone. Do we have an official school zone posted? I don't know if I've ever, that may be the only thing they may ask us to post a school zone.
And I will, I can definitely look into that.
That's the only thing I read in that, in that paperwork.
Yep.
And then, I don't know if the city has a welder, but we are willing to donate from a welder if you need that for.
I, my, I, my welder's at the shop right now, so.
Any assistance needed, we can help.
Okay.
Guy, you want a motion on there to make applications DOT, because that makes it legal, right?
Yeah, right, I think so, I think so.
Okay, so do we have a motion for approval, uh, to at least seek, uh, approve, or seek approval from the DOT to make that legal?
So.
Move by Henderson?
Sure.
Second by Trump. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, thank you. All right, item I, uh, discuss updating the employee drug and alcohol policy in possible motion.
I made contact with CJ Cooper. We have used them in the past for drug testing, and basically our drug and alcohol policy has been left to lapse over the past few years. It's not up to date. Uh, so when I contacted them, they offered to send us the new policy that is, has all the current laws in it and the current, um, language that the state of Iowa recommends for drug testing. Our situation is not heavy duty, because we don't have a bunch of D or, uh, CDL drivers, um, but this all began because of the pre-employment drug screening for Danielle, so, um, I think it's pretty easy. They, as part of the yearly fifty-five dollar fee that we're going to pay them to manage our drug testing, they provided this, so it's virtually no cost. We get to bring our drug and alcohol policy up to date. Everybody that works here is listed on the, the sheet and, uh, our, uh, in fact, I think I'm the only one that will get pulled for a random, because I'm the only one that holds a CDL license right now. So, uh, the rest of them only would get pulled if there's a suspicion, according to the policy, so.
It's not random, though.
Yeah.
Um, I did find two typos on page four. I can bring those to you.
Okay, I'm glad you had time to read that closely. That's good.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, that's good. Um, and they, I kind of pushed her to get it done, so I'm sure she was flying through, getting it all ready for us, because she did customize it to us. Um, I'm sure she has a fine copy that she has added, so.
It's clear to the meaning, but we should.
Okay.
This is separate from our whole side of order, Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. This would just be added to the personnel handbook.
Do you have a motion on that also, Guy?
Yes, please.
Do you have a motion for approval on that?
I would move we adopt the, um, drug and alcohol policy as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion by Sarason, second by Sean's. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item J is just continuation from last month. Those have been completed. I think the only carryover for that was because your email wasn't working. I don't know if you had a chance to review it, but they are complete, so. Any other questions on that? All right, that's it then. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Did you want to introduce Danielle as part of this?
Oh, because we didn't have one. We kind of talked about it a little bit, but, uh, Danielle, would you like to, uh, say anything, um, either about yourself or the job, or any, you don't have to if you don't want to. That's up to you, but, uh, this is certainly our time, or your opportunity to do that. Danielle Brex is our new, um, city clerk. She starts next week. We're very happy to have you starting with us. Would you like to say anything?
Uh, I would just like to say thank you, and I'm excited to start working Monday.
You, uh, the only one you're not getting tonight is, uh, Councilman Metz, and I mentioned that he's off because of a family emergency, but, uh, he's not hard to find. He pops in every now and again, so, um, that'll, that's, uh, nice that you're on board. I will mention to him also. I'll give him an update from this evening, and, um, he would, probably, he works, uh, in Marion, but he, he'll get an opportunity to stop, and it's, so, very exciting to be in for, thank you again for coming this evening. Anything else, council? All right, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.